Okay, so we called. Number 22, Eastside Board of Ed. We called. PM. And when it's ready to session discussion. Discuss. Matter. I did a session. Regular meeting. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to public comment, if anybody would like to make a comment. Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the August fifteenth Board of Ed regular meeting.
I have a comment. Of the minutes, I was at the meeting that I was zoomed. Or anyway, Jackie, I think we talked about you're going to put that I vote yes on everything.
So I'll address that.
Oh, you dress it. Okay. I didn't say it to you. I said it.
No, I know Jackie sent me the email, but you votes are public. So you had to either say I or wave your hands.
Oh, okay.
It's not a Jackie vote.
So the next time, if I can't get anyone's attention, I should be rude and scream.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or use the reaction like you can, you can use.
I could have typed yet, but it was like, the meeting was rolling and I didn't want to, but the next time I will.
Yeah, please do.
That's fair. Absolutely.
If I just add, I think there was a few moments that you had called upon. Jill. Did you? For a reaction, I believe.
Yeah, that's okay. So we know for next time. Whoever's on Zoom, leaves on Zoom now. If there's a vote, you know, put your hand, you can use a virtual hand or you can say I or some give us some acknowledgement somehow and we'll capture it.
Yeah, I'll try and read my phone. Jackie sometimes texts too and somebody's, you know, just likely popped in.
So how about we put it in the narrative? That doesn't, that doesn't count. Okay.
It has to be public vocal or shown with an air.
So. Okay.
Do we have a motion on the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
All those in favor?
I.
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 Oppose. Stain. Okay. That now we have, Dan can give us an update. The selectmen's representative?
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
From the board. Two things going on. One of the most important and what I would suggest is really sort of keep their finger on the pulse of it is we're considering charter revision.
Yes.
And so I want everyone to be aware of that and to be tracking it and get involved and it'll be a lot of opportunities for inputs from the public and from the board. So just be aware that that is moving forward. Still don't know. What the size of the charter committee is going to be yet. We're thinking somewhere between nine and twenty, but probably towards the lower end of that. Subcommittees that are needed. So I think maybe nine is a little too slow for twenty. So let's keep an eye out for that. So you have the opportunity to make inputs into that process. Very difficult process for the town. There are a lot of. Timing and date requirements. And if you make a mistake, you gotta sort of scratch. So you have to be very attentive.
Dan, if I could just quickly comment, because Ann has been here a couple of times and we provided input. If possible, we would like the Board of Ed representative on the Charter Committee. I think we would really like.
Yeah, there is criteria for and.
They can only so many elected people.
So. I'll make sure that.
Okay, if possible, yeah. As well. Okay, great. Thanks.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
So it's my most important thing. There's a, the Department of Transportation is working on a Route 161 corridor study that is still moving along. And that would be from high school all the way down to where Route 166. So. We'll see what comes of that. You know, there's some difficulties along that route. It's pretty narrow where the water is, but certainly there are improvements that could be made. So.
Any way they can do that way towards Salem too?
It's, it's going this way. So it'll be from.
No, I know, but can we encourage them to go that way too?
I don't know.
Only because that way too has a lot of accidents.
Yeah, no, that's true. Yeah. But the focus for this particular study would be from Route 1 basically down. But you're right, the whole Route 161.
Is a mess.
It's very busy. People really crowd pretty fast on the road. I know it's interesting. We saw the waste ordinance and there were some changes to that and some of the planned unit developments are more. Compacted by changes to that ordinance. Regular, people live on regular streets where the streets are normal. But we have a planned unit development where the roads are only fifteen inches, not inches, feet wide. It's difficult for the trucks to maneuver. So there has been some trying to grow that service in areas where it's gonna be more and more difficult for the trucks. That's just going on with that. One other thing, we're looking at a proposed emergency access between Remagna Road and Stonywood Drive. And it's not gonna happen, you know, next week, but it's something we're looking at to see if it's feasible. And of course, that would be work with bus routes and that sort of thing. So make sure, you know, be aware that that might be happening. Who knows, a couple of years or whatever they get the funding and if it's feasible to do. That's important because flooding situations, some of those areas are sealed off.
Yeah.
And I'm also expat show for the parks and rest. And I guess they really did a great job even with the, you know, with the problem with the water, the dryness. They did their job this summer keeping the athletic fields green. And they're able to do that because they have, they were able to pump, they have their own wells that they can pump from without impacting, you know, we have water restrictions. So they were still able to maintain the fields. And let's see. There's a field that Brett Sparkle, the home, the girls' baby soccer, the whole games and varsity practices. So they mentioned that did the night. That's about it.
Questions for Dan?
Just a thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Dan.
Yeah, thanks. Nice to see you.
And now we move on to the Eastline High School Student Representatives. We have Manak Kavian who's here previously. So thanks, year two, for you. And we have Mahira Hassan as our eleventh grade representative. So take it away.
So I'll just. I'm the new deputy representative, like I said, and I'm the secretary of the college center. So I've been super involved and I'm excited.
Great, thanks.
I just have a few dates. So December eighth was back to school night for us. September fifteenth is the senior parent night. September sixteenth is the senior picnic at Cook's Park from twelve to two. And then October third is the eighth spirit week. And then October eighth is homecoming. And October fifth, we have our college fair. And then one thing, we had a full Senate meeting today and the students wanted to bring up an idea with the sports money. So before every game, you have to scan a QR code order to enter and get your money. Maybe there was an option to go and pay at the door just because they don't have access to their phone necessarily.
Can you, can I just say, sorry, ask the question, can you use clarify? So that students don't have access to the phone or parents or?
Parents and like grandparents.
Parents, grandparents. Okay. I was kind of questioning my students not having access to the phone. I was just trying to figure out.
During, for the students, their battery might be dead.
Yeah.
They might have a dead battery.
Great, thank you.
That's a great idea because I was wondering the same thing, how are grandparents and parents gonna get in?
Okay, so that was the feedback. Is that from the new go fan type of situation? Okay, so did they find that a lot of people were kind of showing up that they didn't have a ticket or they hadn't and they were kind of out of luck or how did it work?
I think honestly, right before this, we had a full Senate meeting with everyone in our class. And also the issue that was brought up was the fact that maybe grandparents may not have access to their phone all the time. They might not be able to get it to the game because they don't have it. So if they're able to pay at the door, it'd be a lot easier for them.
I got it.
And the general public.
I know. I think the goal is to be cashless, but there's going to be some hiccups along the way for sure because not, you know, not everybody carries cash. I'm actually one of those people. But.
What about a credit card terminal? No, I know you do, but I'm just saying that instead of, we're really trying to get away.
Yeah.
I'm just putting that out there. It's the easiest thing to keep cash out of the transaction.
Do a lot of schools have this?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, the ECC moved to a. Two years ago, three years ago for ECC events.
Yeah.
And what happens is you show up, you didn't realize you had it. So then they give you the, like, yours will let, you know, go on your phone and go through things. But if there's like grandparents on the phone, that's, that's an issue that we have. But it, and it takes five minutes to kind of plug it all in.
I know that I got the email the other day, but it said it wasn't available for Android phones. It said it was only for Apples.
Yeah, I missed that. I have a question. Can't.
So I was like, wait a minute again. Half of us have Apples and half of us have Androids.
This is the goal.
That was the email that went home to all the parents.
The camp, yeah. Oh, yeah, you're right.
I think the app is available only by Apple. If you have an Android, you have to go to the website.
Why don't we do this? Can we bring this to FFO and just give an update on Apple, Android? What if someone doesn't have a phone?
Yeah.
And maybe.
Yeah. That'd be a good idea.
Yeah, it's another question.
Thanks for bringing that. Thanks.
Yep.
I have one more question. I'm just still stuck at that credit card terminal. Whoever we bank with could probably offer it to us and maybe give us some sort of discount. I'm just throwing that out just because every, I don't know anyone that's not carrying plastic in their wallet. And if grandparents, I would think we have plastic. So.
Yeah. That's, that's.
Whatever you all decide.
I have a question about that. About what you said you mentioned, what's the upcoming county fair and such. Do you have a sense of the representation that will, they're coming here, is that right? No, I'm not honestly too sure yet, but I know it's a big deal because it is COVID. They haven't been able to have this recently. Yeah. So I can figure that out and I can tell that to whoever the next person is gonna call me. I'll call Mahira and I think Brennan's the next person to call. So I know.
Yeah, we can work. We, I had the counselors, but they got a usually huge number of colleges, a whole, yeah, this whole area is filled.
And then in the back.
And the gym, they go in the North Gym too as well. I can get you support.
It's, yeah, that was just such a change point of COVID of like, you know.
Yeah, maybe on the college and I know our admissions reps are eager to go to these kind of events. So I'm sure that's the case for most colleges around here in the region. So I'm sure that it's gonna be a good representation.
Yeah, I just, I was wondering, speaking of fairs, did, did they set a date for the club fair yet? Because I know that has been a long time since COVID as well. You know anything about that?
Not yet, but I believe it's still in the works. What I've heard is that it's in June and about October.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you, ladies. You don't want to say it.
Thanks so much. Bye. We have two eleven three.
One now.
We have two, yeah, we don't, that's it for this.
That's it.
Yep. Yep. Okay, um, that moves us on to the consent agenda. We had one consent agenda item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
I would like to second it.
All those in favor?
I. I.
Hi.
Just thank. Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Well done as well, but getting back to those.
So, and for those of you at home, just so you know what, this was the approval of a proposed out of country field trip to Spain and France during the April twenty twenty-three vacation as presented. Yes, thank you. Happy, we're getting back to our new normal. So it's good. Okay, moving on, discussion action items instructional, we're first one is discussion on the ELPS pathways update.
Yeah, so we wanted to just circle back for a minute on pathways. We brought it forward last year. The intended goal is to really continue to build and further opportunities for students that might not necessarily be going on to college. We've got a lot of great connections across Southeastern Connecticut. And I think we need to do a better job of building to support and grow those, those connections. So Dave Facillo did a lot of work last year in establishing those and reestablishing all the ones for coastal connections as well, which have been, you know, are back in place now, but furthering it for the high school and students here. So. There really, I didn't ask them to come tonight to give a report, but I'd like, we, we'd like to keep this on as an agenda item. And really, it's one of my main goals this year. I would like it to be, you know, a board goal as well. We look at, you know, goals for the Board of Ed to really, to try and build a more robust pathways, experience, opportunity for, you know, for students. I think there's a lot of great things we could do. And actually Pipeline is going. We've got the Perkins Grant going. We're looking to replace computers in the CAD rooms with the Perkins Grant. We've got the carpenters, the construction woodworking programs through the North Atlantic State's carpenters program. That's a big one that's coming online. I'll build a few, if any, for each of those in old line or that group in old line.
No, we have, we have met with the Pipeline folks and there, if, there's a long story to that, but it wasn't an easy fit. We do do some other stuff that's similar. And I think, you know, there's also, when, when I look at that, I think that it's not, I think you could do something to help both the kids who aren't going to college and the kids who might be going to. College as well in terms of trying to get a better understanding of where to go and whether it be like internships, we're talking about bringing some other people in. And I know that we have a, I teach the CAD class that I teach, for example, they get credit at Three Rivers. So some of those kids can get, you know, a community college start with courses that are being offered here. So that, I think we're all tied into that same.
That's, that's exactly what this pilot program, so they can receive a year of credit through training if they're, so yeah, those pieces, what we're looking at, but we've got one student too. Offering credit through experiential learning opportunity through coastal. She's working for a school program. So we're, credit in that. So that's growing. CNA, EMT, we're working in that direction as well, formally, opportunities for kids to go and take those and have the courses we taught. High school. So that's another exciting piece. So it's growing. Some discussion, but we want to make this sure this is kind of a continued agenda item as we.
Jamie and.
So I had given Annalise information about EB's ship program that they do with juniors. And you can, I had a kid this summer who I mentored. And but we, they do it in carpentry, welding, engineering. Planning and my department is material services. But we had thirty-three kids this summer from like Norwich all the way over to Westerly. From a lot of the techs, technical schools here, but, and then not a lot of public school, not a lot of the regular schools, I mean, in Connecticut, but a lot more of the technical schools. But that's a great opportunity because then, I mean, they get vacation time, they get paid, I mean, they get paid really well for the program.
For a kid who's trying to figure out what it is that they might want to do, you know, it's field experience.
And they, they, like, once they graduate, they can reapply and they can get right back in.
Is this a free reversal or explain?
No, this is for EB.
It's for EB.
This is a direct internship program for EB.
For EB.
For juniors.
For juniors. It's, I mean, it's a great experience.
I think we were a little late to the game.
We were late to the game because I didn't know about it.
But yeah, next time, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, interesting to hear that it was. Seven week program for the summer. I'm sorry, it's seven weeks.
Oh, seven weeks. Yeah.
They start right after July fourth and they ended the twenty-sixth of August. Yeah.
Great.
It was a great program.
Yeah.
EB is hiring so many people.
Yeah, they're hiring up crazy.
It's a pipeline for us just to.
Once those kids graduate, they're more than welcome to reapply and they get back in above other people because they've already been in.
Yeah.
So I think another piece that I love about the Perkins program is its focus on, you know, increasing access for women. And so that's something that, you know, Dave and I haven't really talked about too much yet, but I know that that's a component of the, you know, focus of Perkins was to, you know, increase the numbers of, number of women who are entering the CTE career pathway field. So. I think that's a good opportunity. I'm curious to see what the ratio of women were in that.
There was a lot. Yeah, there was a lot of women who were carpenters and who were welders.
Yes.
They were talking, they talked so much about the wonderful experience that they had down in the shipyard building boats.
Yes, yeah.
There was a lot of women who were in the shipyard this summer with high school kids.
I have a comment and then I'll go to Ken. Yeah, so in addition, I know we're trying to look at what can we do internally? So we have obviously the print shop business and how can we link some of the things our business classes and business students do within here. Also across the street, if you haven't seen, there is the Giving Garden. So Lisa Picarazzi and Bruce Cohen and others are kind of driving that in an open house. Last week I went to it. They're doing a lot and they really want to link to schools. Annalise is going to be meeting with them.
Yeah, I'm really excited about that.
Week or two weeks or something like that when it was. Because they want to also link to the schools and there's some really neat things that they're doing. So I think there's a lot of opportunity out there. And, you know, we just have to, you know, find it and then culture it.
I can't agree more, but just one caveat is that we must market what we do and advertise what we do and pathways program. I think that we have been a little bit, but I think that we can really truly expand on that for not just, you know, our students, but possibly incoming students that are looking for these types of pathways and opportunities. To come to our schools.
Definitely.
Sorry, sorry. Just to add to what you're saying, I'm gonna think. It is a different option than the technical school that may or may not be known, you know, outside of our town, but. But I think it's sort of a different experience, a good experience and some, you know, they're. The technical schools might want to have other options and this would be a really good, honestly.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And just to add on to that is because, you know, for the technical schools, you have to get in to the technical schools. And just because we were co-op-ing last year with Norwich Tech with the wrestling program, I learned really how difficult that truly is. I don't think that a lot of people really do understand that it is incredibly hard and you have to do it every single year in order to continue to go. So there are kids that don't have the opportunity because they just can't go. So to offer these types of opportunities through a pathways program through our school, I think is phenomenal.
That they are focused on, right?
Right.
There's some of these spots and these scores and all of those kinds of things come into play. So they might be kind of tracking on that front.
Anyway, we have a gem too in our own Dr. One who's here. We've had a few conversations. Got a lot of great connections, you know, across Southeastern Connecticut. And Chris has, so, you know, in that field of work too, ties in a lot of what the kids are doing. So Chris brought a lot of, a lot of good ideas to the plate as well. So.
Chris, you were discussed in chemistry in the classroom on parent back to school night. You were discussed as a great resource for the students to talk to.
That's nice.
Other.
Now, now.
Other thoughts or questions? To close it out, so in our retreat, this was a topic pathways, a common consistent theme.
Yes.
That across the Board of Ed. And so it's one that we are going to spend more board agenda time on. So this is a topic that's going to kind of come up and keep getting updates and see the progress that we're making. So. Thanks for that update and we'll move on to the discussion of the opening of school for this year.
Yeah, just as we do kind of each year, we put this on first meeting, starting the school off to a really good start. Our biggest issue is still staffing with our professionals. And just trying to read which way to send they to, to find individuals and draw them, draw them in. Outside of that, you know, our programs are up running and people just have a different vibe this year. It seems that, and things are, are back to normal. And it's, it's strange because we're trying to recall, at least I am, trying to recall from three years ago, you know, the wheel was turning and yet you're kind of like, you get a rhythm going each year. And we got out of that rhythm. So now remembering the things that we used to do. Oh yeah, that's right. We did do it that way. So it's, it's been interesting to get back into, into the realm of normal. So we're feeling good. School wise, COVID is behind us. Districts are still doing a lot of different things when it comes to. COVID and, you know, requirements, for instance, some districts, you know, with quarantining are and are not following, you know, the five day rule. I mean, everything is a recommendation. So we're still trying to kind of follow what TB is telling us, but it's kind of all over the map, which is interesting. So we'll see where, where all that goes and hopefully our cases, you know, remain low and move forward. So. But good, good start and we're very happy. All the open houses are underway. The Google Calendar, I'll talk about that during my report, but you should have gotten a copy of that. We can kind of open that up for some discussion a little bit later. So you can see all the events too, because we want you to some of the events that are coming up. So got a lot of good things. So.
The parents that I did attend as a parent. And it was, the vibe was amazing. There were hugs, there were handshakes. There were people who haven't, you know, interacted with them a long time. The teachers were so enthusiastic. There were so many smiles. It was great. Thank you.
I second that.
Yeah. Agreed. Agreed.
It was, it was awesome to be back.
The cookies were good too.
But there weren't any left over.
We're gearing up for the middle school and elementary back to schools and they're all forthcoming. So we're excited to get those rolling. So, and you know, pay thanks to the union as well, Scott Grace. Lot of positiveness, communication to Scott had a great message, you know, communications. We appreciate that.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to discussion action items for finance facilities and community. And the first item is discussion action on maintenance truck and homes, hot water heater, hot water purchase.
All right. So we, we start off, Kristen, we can kind of, kind of turn it over to you for some more specifics on both these items. We lumped these together because we have a pot of money down at the town under the learn fund. So it was the money for newer board members, Learn used to rent a space, the North Wing at Luke Hanks, and we generated revenue from that. There's still a pot of money downtown that we haven't tapped into and used yet or asked the town to share. We thought, rather than trying to hit our operating budget for items such as these two here, that we would potentially go to the town and ask to release some of those learn funds to cover the cost of these, these two items. I'll let Chris kind of give some details about both of these, the hot water heater you did hear, if we, if you're here, I was trying to maybe want to hear, but in the spring, we talked about the issue with the middle school with the hot water heater. Jason's used all his Band-Aids on it and it's, it's leaking more and more. So we need to, result of you showing the details. So. So, uh, we need to, so, so you show the details, so.
With that introduction, let's do the hot water heater first. So, um, yeah, as you may recall, if you were here in the spring, uh, our water heater sprung and leaked in the spring. And, uh, it is a unit that is original to the school, so it's also at its twentieth birthday. Uh, we got a good year out of it. I think the burner on there was replaced and, but, uh, year fifteen, I think. So we're gonna re-lyze the burner, but the tank itself is leaking and it's not repairable, so it has to be replaced. We hope to get through another year and it's dripping a little bit more. And as the year progresses, we don't make it to a point where it's let go and then we're six weeks behind getting a replacement. So, uh, we're pushing this forward now, uh, to get it in, in a time and manner so that we can control the circumstances instead of being responsive to it. So I can answer any questions about the water here. Mechanical equipment like that is fifteen to twenty years, so it's not worth, uh, the end of life.
I asked all my questions.
Just skimming through here and this quote says it's only valid for some short period. Our price is valid for five days and that was way back in May, so, yeah. Just making sure that we're not missing another twenty thousand dollars.
Still, where they're committed to it?
Yes, there are contract providers, so all the labor rates are also, I think, when it went down or started to go down, they, yeah, they bought it. So I believe they, uh, have it already or can get it very quickly. Uh, they wouldn't say that they have it.
No, it's not on a barge and like a.
It is somewhere in the US. Some of the water heater.
Move on to the truck.
The one's a truck, okay. So the truck that, uh, we talked about is, um, just so you know, background is two thousand six. Silverado, uh, it has a hundred and one thousand miles on it now. It was gifted to us from Parks and Rec in two thousand nineteen. Uh, at the time it came over to us, it had eighty thousand miles on it. Um, and the mechanic expected that we get another three or four years out of it. So we've gotten another three or four years out of it. Uh, when we had it into shop most recently for its, uh, planned maintenance. Um, a couple of things, uh, came to attention, uh, two significant ones is some damage to the frame. Concerns that the frame won't last another plowing season. And also when they had the truck up on the lift, uh, when they cycled the drive shaft, you could see a visible wobble in it, so they're not sure if the drive shaft has bent or if it's starting to lose, something's wrong. Uh, so they recommended that we not use it for anything more than just like to be around town. And not even do that for very long because they suggested we stay off the highway and anything but local routes. So, uh, we're nursing along right now just to get our work done. Um, so what we're proposing to do is basically to replace it, uh, nearly in time. Um, another heavy duty truck that we do the plowing with, um, also with the lift gate on the back. And that would provide us the opportunity to do the jobs that we currently do today. Questions on our truck request?
So we're paying twenty nine, sorry, twenty nine thousand, thirty thousand for the truck.
For the base, so the actual total cost.
All right, I don't buy cars very often.
Total cost, and this is a statewide contract price, uh, with the lift gate and the plow is fifty-three.
Once every ten years.
This is where the state contract has been.
This was not, so. So the, uh, reason we're talking about the two of these issues at this time is that the, uh, recommendation is to utilize learn funds to pay for these two, uh, projects and, uh, we have around one hundred sixty thousand dollars, I believe, in the learn account, uh, currently undesignated, so we would use those ones towards these two purposes.
So no hit to our operating budget, which we can't afford, right?
I just want to clarify, the learn budget and the pool roof budget are two separate budgets. I, I thought that, but I just wanted to make sure I. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
How much trouble is in the, uh, learn budget?
One sixty.
One fifty-four, hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Okay, so we're only, we'll just have like twenty thousand left.
Chris, maybe at the FFO meeting, maybe we talked a little bit and maybe it'd be worth restating, um, about, are there an option for a used truck versus not? And then also about, could we use a different, maybe a town vehicle or something like that as well? Are there, what other options did you look at besides just buying a new one?
So in the FFO that Eric mentioned, you know, question that came up is, well, you know, is there an opportunity to buy a used car, used truck? And, uh, my two answers to that was first of all, I'm very hesitant to buy anything used that would have been used for plowing. Uh, because it does take a toll on the vehicles. You're not sure what you're getting because structural damage could be hitting the frame. Then next thing you know, you're replacing the frame. Yeah, really save that. Yeah, and then the, uh, the other thing right now is anybody's been watching the automobile market. There's just not a lot out there that's available to use, even if it hasn't been used for other purposes. Um, and it's very close to price, uh, used in some cases at the, at the age condition, we would want to buy it at, to a new vehicle, so not really saving anything. Second question that came up though is regarding, well, uh, is there an opportunity to borrow something from the town, Parks and Rec, Public Works? Uh, because we see they have, you know, their vehicles drive around in the winter, everybody has a plow on, most have plowed with pickup trucks. I am very much proponent of borrowing and using items and equipment whenever we can. Uh, my experience in the past though is when you get to something that is, uh, in low supply and important for certain events like snow plowing. You just can't get a hold of it when you need it because somebody else has first dibs on it. So it's not, I just have never had much luck sharing, uh, critical equipment just because you're always second or third in line before it.
And we would need to be first in line.
So yes, I actually have posed those questions, um, and shared needs and wants, right? Because on our agenda next is a budget deficit of over five hundred thousand dollars. So no matter what hat I have on, um, I, I'm looking at that and going, okay. Do we really need a twenty twenty-two brand new vehicle listed? Uh, and, and I have the breakdown, okay? So at the end of it, it's fifty-three thousand dollars. So funny story, as I'm going over it, my husband was on his break and he laughed because he said, boy, did they send that requisition to the wrong person. Because when you have a need and a want, I'm looking at a need. I'm staring at a need for a water heater at the middle school for eighty-something thousand dollars that we need. And at some point, we're going to have another need and right now we have a five hundred and something thousand dollar need. Um, and we're going to continue to have need. So you're, you're going to hear me, um, speak very, very focused in regards to revenue and bringing money into the district for sustainability. Because we have a problem and, and I'm looking at that and going, listen. We can talk to the town, we can share services, we can take a look at this. I honestly do not believe that we need to purchase a twenty twenty-two, um, brand new truck. I just don't. So that is some of the things that I also shared in the FFO, uh, authentically going to do it here too. Um, and I hate saying no, I do. I hate, especially to Chris and to any of, um, uh, the people that, that work so hard in our district, but the next agenda item is a deficit. So I don't know how I could support it and then justify it with our teachers, with our parents, with our community members, with our Board of Finance members who are staring down everything we do and I don't blame them. I would too. If I had that lens, I would. They're wonderful people. Uh, but nonetheless, that's where we're at. So I wanted to share some of the, uh, other things that were shared at the FFO in the question on the, the motion, is this motion going to be bundled together or are we doing these separate?
It's bundled right now, but obviously we could split it apart. Is there another, which should, were you talking going use then or what was your, because we get, we need a truck.
I got it. So some of the suggestions were to take a look at sharing, um, a vehicle with the town. Currently and for the past few years, the town has been, um, plowing our, our driveways. Um, our, our parking areas and our buildings. So, and one of the concerns years ago was, are we going to be the first in line or the last in line? Because clearly we're priority and, and the kids are priority and getting everybody into the building is the priority. Um, and we hadn't, or I hadn't, I don't have any knowledge of having any issues with that. Uh, to my knowledge, uh, the town, uh, did help us with that and that certainly saved us and helped us. Um, you know, we're all in this together and, you know, we are all facing turbulent times. So I would like to have a conversation with the town. You had a conversation with the town. Uh, is there another route here that we can share versus purchasing a brand new vehicle? Uh, for fifty-three thousand dollars. I know right now personally, budgetary wise, I'm not going to go run out and buy a brand new vehicle. I'm going to sit on my used two thousand and eleven beautiful Tahoe that's perfectly fine. I don't need a brand new one. Okay, and, um, when you're looking at, you know, what we're looking at, I just, I can't justify that. That's just me, but I am going to request that it be separated and not bundled together because if it's bundled, I can't go for it in favor.
Joe, and then Jamie, and then.
So Chris, what is the life expectancy on a normal truck and its day-to-day activities?
So.
Not a plowing truck, but a normal truck.
When I was at Public Works in my last, where we would schedule for twelve years for pickup truck.
And what, and plow truck?
Like, you know, that was public, public agency too.
This used to be a town truck, right? How long did the town have it?
Oh, they bought it new. And we got it in two thousand nine.
Lived a life.
Yes.
Okay, so my concern is if we share with the town and we have to wait in line, our schools won't be plowed. But if we get it first, the town can't plow the road, so the kids can't get to school either way. Right, so if the roads in town aren't plowed, then the kids can't get to school. But if the parking lots aren't plowed, then the kids can't get to school.
So, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just, if we share it and we don't, and we let them plow the roads first, the school partner like gets a second, but if we take it first, the town roads don't get plowed.
So, um, I'm trying to remember, this is the first areas here, I think, was when we had the, the heavier one. And what the town would do for us for plowing is they would send like one of the big trucks through to do like pathway and then they go out and do roads. So, you know, our pickup trucks do all the intermediates.
They would do like the cleanup.
Right, um, and they would, you know, the town wouldn't do that everywhere. They probably come through, I think they came through here off of Boss Post Road over to Chesterfield, just to break that out. Um, I think they probably did the, uh, two access roads at the middle school just up back. But all the small dirty work, I guess, like the term is, done by the pickups.
So when I first came on the board, we used to contract the beards. And it was a very big cost, um, and it was, we'd be put on their route. So we obviously don't want to do that, right? So then we have to look at what would it cost us to contract with someone to do all of our buildings versus what does it cost to have the town do it with us splitting the difference, right? So it, to me, would seem cost effective for us to do it in concert with the town. Am I correct in saying that? Okay. So, but you're, I'm done.
We were, we were sharing, we were helping at one point when we had the working truck, us, because we, we would help them out, they would help us out.
No, no, I know. I just wanted to make sure I have.
Yeah, we're on a pickle because this lesson's our ability to help them out. I don't know if they would now charge us for, if we're not helping them out anymore.
I just wanted to make sure I had the even flow of job responsibilities and storyline.
Lisa, and then Bill, and then Jill. Lisa, Bill, Jill.
Uh, so, so thank you for kind of walking us through. I, I think what I'm hearing is that clearly there is a need. Right, and you've outlined, um, you know, some of the, some of the options are the, have been looked at. I think for me, being presented sort of with the one option without kind of having anything else to look at, makes it hard to, you know, in good conscience kind of, you know, saying, yes, this is the best thing. There is a need, but I've heard, I think, I don't know, I, I'm not even sure, three or four or five different things that either have been done in the past or have been looked at and, um, just kind of from a, uh, you know, two diligence kind of standpoint. And you guys, family, you guys all have all of that. But I think it would be useful for us to make that decision based on that information or look and look at more of the options for you.
Bill and then Jill.
Me?
Yeah, Bill.
Okay.
All right, a couple of questions. I, uh, the learn funds, are those restricted in any way for use or, or is that money?
No, it can be used for.
So that can address other.
Yeah, projects or things of that nature is what it's traditionally been used for. We haven't touched it in years.
And what's replenishing those?
So that's just. Just depleting that and eliminating that account at the town.
Okay, so that's a, just a one shot and we're using it.
That's right.
We've used it primarily to, you know, capital. All right, just trying to understand that. All right, the, I mean, I, I, it doesn't sound like this is a want. It sounds like we got a truck that's broken and we need to replace it. So I, I, I think in the, the price looks pretty good. I mean, to, to nickel and dime a little bit, you know, can we recycle the plow? Do we need the lift gate? I mean, it was, we got a thirteen thousand dollar package that, I, I don't know, can that be put off down the road or is that a great deal on that stuff? Who, I don't know. Um, we've got a truck with a plow on it right now.
Original and it's pretty shot too.
My question is, if, what else, I guess, is, what else is this truck used for besides snow? Because of, okay, climate change, we may not have as much snow. So what else would we use it for?
So a couple of options with the trucks that we have, you know, throughout the year.
I mean, do we have, how many trucks do we have on staff announced in our garage? The town will share with us?
That's another year or two.
Don't start me on that one. I, I gotta deal for garage.
So throughout the year, they're, they're used for, well, on the fifteenth or sixteenth, we'll be hauling stuff down to, uh, the beach or wherever they're having the senior parking lot because that's when we get, or the senior park, not senior picnic, sorry. Hauling stuff back for the senior picnic. During the summers, we're taking materials from E S Y to any of the schools. And we're also using it as our grounds, keeping equipment. So if we're cutting brush, we're throwing brush in the back. Um, although we may not have as much snow, I think we'll probably have a lot. Although we may not have as much snow, I think we'll probably have a lot of ice and we have salt. And we do our own salt and uh nine, nine percent of the time, because the town only has a bigger trucks, it's easier for us. And we do have a lot of multiple.
Okay, that's good. I I think, I feel you're gonna use it like anyone else does. So, sorry for coming in also, the salt team. You talked about the town coming in with their big trucks. They just do a quick pass through, so we can at least do whatever.
And only, and only if there's enough snow to warrant.
Okay, okay, so then we, we come in and do the rest basically, so the students and the faculty are safe to walk around.
Last winter, we probably didn't.
They cut up like sixteen inches. Over sixteen inches, the town will commit.
But they're not really doing anything else for that, us besides that, which is nice. I'm not, I'm not saying they're not sharing. I guess is, I'm just thinking about this and how important a truck it is in the, in your life and really in the school system's life. And we've never really had a new vehicle that I know of. Have we ever had a new vehicle? I can't remember which one. What did we buy? So I guess when thinking truck, this truck, we could probably get twenty years out of.
We would try to.
Well, and I, I mean, but when you're, when you're. I guess, when you're cleaning up snow, you hit curbs, you hit things and it knock, it beats, beats on your truck, but. I guess is, I'm just saying, I'm thinking we should do it, because we're always gonna have needs and we're gonna always have something. We have this gift. From Lauren. And I, I personally would vote for it. I think it's, we spend so much time scraping and skimping and, you know, whatever, and sometimes I'm thinking. A truck is so important. I mean, I know families that have a truck and it's like makes or breaks whether that family, we say, I'm, I'm leaving people on the trucks, so. They are good tools. I'm done. Thank you.
Great, so, um, go ahead. And then I was gonna make a comment too, so.
To me, this is an essential part of getting kids to school. Um I don't see it as an option, like it's an extra. Toy that we need or whatever. To me, this is, you don't know the weather. And if we do nothing. We're going to act to at least provide some form of transportation. And then we have a rough winter, I mean, then we're ready to. I think it's important that we have at least a good quality. Slightly used truck, if not a new one, because that's what's going to be holding me.
I correct one thing I say. I wanna say that we have four trucks, one has a dump body on the back. Um and these dump, so if anybody drove by itself for trucks, just to kick, just wanna be clear.
I had a question that I didn't think about in FFO. What if, so the truck is like twenty eight grand or whatever it is, and then it like almost doubles because it's a plow. Do I have that right?
Um, lift gate was six K, and of course, lift gate is, you know, for, anybody doesn't know what the lift gate is. You know, it lowers to the ground, you put the boxes and everything on it, lifts back up to the height, like move everything in, so. So it's the lift gate, the plow, uh a lot of the other items which are considered options to add on, not just. Most of them are things I think that I would consider an option because they're necessary to have truck that plows like the strobes and, you know, the uh. I'm fitting for the electronics and those things, so, but.
Yeah, and then, so maybe we need a little, some of those, uh and I guess where I was going is. If we outsourced. Plowing. I didn't realize you did that before. But so if we do, but we pay for priority. And I don't know that they offer that, but we say we're first and you pay for being first. I don't know. I don't know if these companies would do that, but in other words, before they go do their other commercial lots and whatever else they're doing. They come to us, which we, you'd have to pay, it would be interesting. Yeah, it would. But if you're talking about five or ten times a year, I don't know, twenty five a year. I don't think, um, it's probably maybe one time and one time, yeah. So you're talking about five or ten times a year that you're paying some. Uh the, it would be interesting to know if any of the local companies would do that and what the priority. Uh the would be.
I would say that, uh an optimist that their father or companies, that would be beholden to their contract and do that, but I have been involved in. One contract we terminated because the plowing company was not upholding the requirements and putting us at the top of the list. This was one. Service. You could see him driving around with the flashing lights, like, hey. Yeah, yeah, so.
Can you kid out the truck? Let's say we tried that for a year and it didn't work out. Could we then add or is that cost prohibitive? Is there any issues with?
A lot of people buy a truck upfront and then upgrade it later for a plower or whatnot, so it is feasible.
If that costs, I don't know if we know that cost from years back. I'm trying to think that was in the high thousands of dollars. For the company, beers, I can't remember.
Oh, it was, yeah.
Because of the volume of.
Fifteen or sixteen thousand.
At least, yeah.
But, well, that would be a good number for us to have, because if you tell me it's fifteen thousand a season.
Yeah.
That's a very telling, that's an important number to have. If it was two thousand a season, I'm just making up. Then you can say, so Candace and then Bill.
Okay, so Chris, you said you have four, you have four trucks. And is it feasible to say that you could add a plow kit to one?
I'm trying to remember if uh they all have plows already.
Oh. Okay, so we already have.
That's the only thing. At least three of them do, but I'm not sure about the fourth.
Okay, so we already have. So it's not like, it isn't like we don't have access to plowing. Our buildings. Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear, because it, you know, some of the conversation might be go with, yeah, right.
But typically, how the grounds crew work is um one truck. Is assigned to just middle school mains and they'll spend, depending on snow, obviously, uh they'll do that and then um. Another one would go down to Nyanic in between and then the others work around here, so.
Thank you.
And we'd be down, if we didn't do this truck, we're down to two plows?
Down one.
We're from three to two?
Right, or four to three.
Yeah, yeah, whichever way it is, okay. Thanks, Bill.
Hey, that was essentially the question, is how many of the other trucks have plows and, you know, what, what does it look like if we go? If we have some, it's just a matter of, we're, schools either gonna, we're either gonna make it in time to open school or we're gonna be canceled.
So we have another Board of it next week, right?
We do.
Next week.
Yep, next Monday.
Um, is there anything time sensitive between now and next week on the truck?
Um, I mean, we need to wait a week, we can, wait a week, that's much better than two weeks or, you know, longer, but just our next stop is. You gotta go to the Board, you gotta go to Board of Selectmen, you gotta go to the Board of Finance and get approval. So there's a snowballing effect of approval.
Well, we can make two separate motions and we can, um but another option is, maybe there's a little more data based on this conversation. That could be provided between today and our next meetings, but only a week from now, that might help us get there, but. I'm not sure, that's kind of what I'm reading, but. Maybe, well, let's, let's start with the hot water heater and do a motion on that.
I would like to make a motion to approve the use of. Prior to the completion of the town approval process, the board requests reimbursement from the learn funds.
Um, further discussion? All those in favor, and I.
I.
Thankfully. Uh opposed, abstain, okay.
Question, so what kind of data are you expecting? That was my next question. I wanna know the details, so we know what everyone has to get.
Yeah, I mean, what I, so personally, I'd like to know what the outsourcing amount we paid.
So, when I did it, so when I did it, when we decided not to go with it, we averaged over a three year period. Um it was like sixteen thousand dollars, like one year, it was over twenty thousand dollars, like twenty five thousand, because again, it varies.
The average per year was sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand, then the following year was like nine thousand, but then the following year was back up again, so that's when we decided that year too.
Okay, and then I think another piece of information I heard um in myself would be. If we're, if we have one less plow. How much time does that increase, like on a, you know, an eight inch snowfall, you know, pick a, pick a snowfall. What, what, what does it mean uh operationally? What, what does it mean? To do that, did? People, is, is that, that's, that's something I think, but I mean, if there's other things that people want.
I think, yes. So what I'm looking for is a less price tag. And I just am having trouble with fifty three thousand dollars for a brand new truck. At this moment in time, when we are about to have a conversation about a deficit of five hundred thousand dollars. I'm so, and I'm not sorry, I'm not. So we have resources. I am requesting that we have a conversation with our town. We have brand new beautiful trucks that have viewed. In fact, I'm almost sounding like Lisa Picarazzi just a bit, God bless her, on the vehicle situation, because it's just. It's just ridiculous. I think that we can look at the town.
So is there an option for the town to provide more service to us?
Or maybe a vehicle or share something, something.
Any other, if, if we don't accrue a motion today and we defer. To make a motion or discussion for next week, are there any, is there more other, any, is there any other information that would be good for us to have? In the next week?
My ask, I think it's similar to what Candace just laid out. Um and, and you know, this. Presentation turns out to be, you know, the option that, you know, kind of looking at all of our needs and costs and all of that. It's just hard to look at one number that's so high and brand new.
Yep. And, and make sure the. Fucking town and our predicament. I mean, it's, it's kind of. Fifty three thousand or bust, I don't know. Uh so what, I don't know what, yeah, for Jill.
One quick question, and I'm hoping my memory is correct. I know we've had this discussion before about sharing with the town. One of my concerns is, and I hate to use this word, we're gonna lose control.
Yeah.
And that's, I'm just have some concerns for that, re- again, repeated, we've had this discussion before and it's always been voted down. But if you want, if the board wants to hop in to a relationship with the town, they're gonna take care of themselves first. And I understand that, you know, they have all of these roads. Uh so just.
We could do like an M O U or something to.
It's just.
That, um, discuss that.
Yes, just really quickly, uh to my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that we already have a relationship with the town and the town is already helping. With our plow.
Well, we help them, they help us, we would not be able to help them, but they would continue to help us. I don't know how they feel about that.
Okay, so, I mean, I feel like, you know, we're all in this together and we're all looking at different obstacles. So I think it's worth the conversation.
Dan, do you know when the next Board of Select meeting is? Just curious.
So we just met uh last week, maybe another, maybe another week.
Are you mean twice?
Two times this month.
I just, sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was just curious. I was trying to think of the timing of my.
Well, yeah, well.
So I think my suggestion might help if you keep your quote. Cause that's from the partnership plan, right? Okay, if you get a private contract from a private dealer for a brand new one. And you get one for a used one from a private dealer, because I, in my head, I know those prices are gonna be much more. If you could add that to that, that would be.
The twenty first is our next meeting.
There's, that's out there, so that could all.
You'd have to ask them to get on their agenda.
Well, why don't we ask to get on their agenda? We can always get off their agenda, right? Is everybody, I mean, everybody's okay, we'll defer next week, we'll get a little more information and we'll add this to the agenda for next week. Okay. Thanks, really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, the long awaited, much anticipated discussion on the budget deficit.
So I wish I had different, you know, news or uh this information, we're still basically at the same place we uh, you know, we left off with, that we reported our last. Five hundred and twenty one thousand dollar, do I have that, I have to look at the number. Yeah, I think it's five twenty one or five twenty one, five hundred and twenty one thousand. Um, maybe it's due to health insurance, um we've had additionally, which kind of bumped it up some. Um, in addition, to remember the differential, just for. The public sake and previous conversations, um we had budgeted a certain amount, it was five percent for an increase for this current year. Uh the state came back with ten and a half percent. We never know that number until later in the year after our budget is already, you know, put together and well passed. You know, backwards. So um that differential was, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, and we had a number of people that have come on to our plan. And it's thirty thousand dollars per family that we, we pay. So to go from a, you know, a, a single or a two person. To family is thirty thousand, that number of people that have come on, whether they've had babies or um they've just switched over, we had a couple of people switch. Um, you know, one spouse, they switched from wherever they were working to our insurance and so on, so that's where a lot of the cost has come into play. So we, um, talking to FFO, um, I would, you know, continue to monitor. Our, our budget is moving, it's still early, you know, it's still, you know, little September, not even the little September yet, so we're right out of the gate. So waiting a while, continuing to look at it, talking about a possible freeze of the budget to try and capture some dollars, our operating budget this year. Um, and kind of continue to see, you know, over the next couple of weeks and each month after that, where things uh remain. Um and if the number, we can get the number, you know, down, so, um, I don't think we're. Such as that, but um maybe we can try and chop some of it down and then discuss, what would be appropriate to, if necessary, to go to the town. So that's kind of the update on.
Just the utilities, just.
Yeah, the problem is, nothing is, nothing is helping us out, because everything is going up. Um utilities this year, everything is gonna be on the rise, so. We're, we're freezing, but yet everything's costing more money. Um so that's not helping us. And we didn't budget for that, you know, we didn't know what we didn't know.
Right, our contract for electricity ends November, so we'll go back out, you know, for it, but the. Uh, we work with C C M, I'm going out to do like a consortium bidding and he said they're coming, everything's coming in high and so what is. Once, once we get the results, we'll, we'll talk about it, but he's recommending possibly locking in and waiting until March to lock in. So you're not stuck at the higher, you know, November's kind of a tough time, because you're right at the height of the, the heating and, you know, the cold weather, so. But he said everything's coming in very high.
So it makes us think about next year in budgeting.
Right.
You know, probably, I don't know, four, five, six percent for an increase. Everybody, I don't know if you looked, I know I looked at my electric bill recently. And uh it was a lot higher than it's been ever, so, um, that's, you know, that's a, a concern for everybody, so. So that's where we're at with the, with the budget. So. Um, any questions at all with?
Jeff, you just said we'd go to the town. In, in your update, though, you'd said that we had already gone to the town and. Or did I misread that? Was there something that?
No, we haven't gone.
Town had said, no.
No, we haven't gone to the town yet. Um, well, I think we're in continuous. No, we haven't gone to the town yet. Well, I think we're in continued discussions with them, so it's just kind of trying to find, I think, that timeframe of, you know, and in, the Board of Finance has a meeting that's coming Wednesday night. I was going to reach out, because I'd like to go give an update as to, you know, just to keep them informed, that they need to make sure that they know, you know, our position as we move forward, and then find the time that if we need to, to talk with them about appropriation, we would do so. I just don't know when that time would be. So. So that's where we're, that's where we're at. Yeah, Candace.
Yeah, so at FFO, we had also talked about reinstituting the representative that we were having going to the Board of Finance meetings. I think that that's a great collaboration, that way everybody's, you know, in sync and knowing kind of the ins and outs of all of the boards and kind of what's going on. I would implore our district to have Plan B and be looking at cost savings. I know that we're going to be watching to see where we end up. But the truth of the matter is, is that everything is going up, and the likelihood of that price tag staying where it is, or maybe even getting larger, is pretty high. So, you know, I, I don't want to be at a point where it's, you know, well, now we have to do this. I want to kind of be proactive and really look at where we can find this deficit.
So that's, that's it for now. We'll keep this kind of as a writing, you know, agenda, I think, as well. And then we'll, we'll go from there.
So that's. All right, we're, we're, we're kind of procedural. So can we, can we, and I'm not sure we have to do this, but can we have a vote to go back to the prior topic seven A, discussion action on the maintenance truck in Owens Hot Water, so?
I'll make a motion to go back to topic seven A.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we split it?
Nope.
Staying, any abstaining or opposed? Okay, so we got two-thirds to go back, so I, I think that's okay. So then we need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to postpone the motion to approve the learn purchase of a tru, to purchase of, using the learns fund to purchase a maintenance truck to our next board event meeting.
I'll second.
I think Candace got that second.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Good, thank you. That's staying. Okay, all right. Okay. Back. Okay. Moving on, thanks. So then we're on to cave updates. Topic seven. So what, well, what, we put this on, a lot of, well, sort of the summer session.
Summer leadership.
Summer leadership. There is actually a board chair roundtable that I can talk a little bit about. There's also the upcoming meeting in November, and we thought it'd be good, there's a lot for newer members, and also for members just to hear kind of what happened at them, and then also what, what is the November event like? So that's kind of why we put this, there's a lot of different things and kind of where we spend our time and the value and hearing from Kev. So that, that's what it was, is a chance to discuss. I think we, in your update, we asked for the people who attended the summer leadership workshop, which was, Jamie, Candace, Esteban.
And Lisa.
And Lisa, okay. There was a quarter. Maybe just give a quick overview, if you don't mind, of what happened, what you learned, or?
Jamie's, look at, she's got her. She's like, I'm ready to go.
Calendar in there, Jamie.
So, but before I start this, I'm going to go back, because there is a cave webinar on September twenty-eighth on parliamentary procedure. Um, Wednesday twenty eighth from twelve to one fifteen, because no matter how much you think you know parliamentary procedure, as evidenced in the last motion, it's always nice to get tutorials.
That's right.
Often. So Wednesday, September twenty-eighth from twelve to one fifteen, it's a virtual webinar.
Say that one more time.
September twenty-eighth from twelve to one fifteen, because I, I go to this one every year, just because as much as I think I know and don't know.
It's a lot.
I know it's a lot.
But so, okay, the leadership conference, we had some really good speakers. Um, Charlene Russell Tucker spoke, she went way over.
She did.
She changed the whole agenda because she just kept going. But she presented the learning ship, the Go Open Connecticut portal.
Yep.
Um, and she talked about how it's open to all teachers and school personnel in the district. They need a username and a password. It recognizes your district's emails, every district in the state, so you want to use it in your teacher's. It's also got curriculum on there. Talked with Ajit. On the go, the end site exam, website. Um, so he went through that with us. We talked about universal pre-K. We talked about our school's mission statements. We talked about student committee reps, not just being the high-flying students, but getting some average students in our boards. We talked about embedded culture. We talked about getting student voices. We talked a lot about school safety. We had some roundtables on chair, chairing boards, policy, community engagement, alliance districts and small districts, and we talked about how we build a supportive climate for our students and our staff. So there was a lot of takeaways. It was a lot in the little, that amount of time.
I think it's a good.
I think I have a couple. If people want to. One, and I'll pass it around if anybody wants to.
And it was nice to have Lisa and Esteban with us, right?
It was great to have other members. And I do have other handouts, but I only have one copy, so if anybody wants to borrow them for a little bit to read and then give back. But that one, I had multiple copies on, but.
I mean, today I have found the cave sessions and seminars really helpful, also to others in the district. You have, you know, those with a lot of experience, those just coming in to start, there's a good mix of kind of presenting materials to us. There was a lot of Q and A, but also kind of the, the roundtables, it's informal and kind of best practice, and so I, I thought it was a, I'd say well-studied.
Great. Yeah, I think the cave opportunities really give us, it gives us an opportunity to learn and really be the best board member who can be, you know, gives us opportunity to talk to other board members or chairs or superintendents and get their input and shares. It's nice.
Yeah, I think as a new board member, it was really useful just to get to know and to understand that, like, you know, all over Connecticut, we're facing similar issues. They kind of networked, see how people are doing in other towns creatively. I think that was really useful, especially at least for the school safety conversation. That was good to hear what different districts are doing, so that was definitely, definitely a good experience and helpful.
Great. Great, thanks. And we'll, we'll do this as a regular, like after a cave, and whoever goes can give, you know, brief updates. We have November coming up. Well, I'll, quickly, so there is a board chair. Like my first one, one. I, I, I found that very valuable as well, here, what other districts are facing, what the boards events are facing, how they dealt with, how they're dealing with certain issues, and, you know, it makes you think, some of the issues they're facing, we're not facing, but it might be we're not facing yet. And it's hearing how they're already dealing and addressing some of the issues, and then that gives you a chance to, we can talk and process about it, rather than all of a sudden, hey, this is in our face. It's like, well, we could have predicted it, because these other districts have already had those, those issues. So it's been an hour, an hour and a half a month, and they come with a couple of questions, which were, they were okay to get things started, but then each chair had an opportunity to then bring up, you know, issues they're facing in their town, and do others have similar, and kind of how are they addressing to try to learn? And that was really valuable. So the questions were okay, but that was really valuable, and, and some, it's just, you know, it was one district, you know, where they talked that they have, forget how many buildings, it was like, you know, thirty buildings or forty buildings, you're like, okay, I can't even process, you know, what you're dealing with. That, that, that's a whole different ballgame, with the issues they have to face are so different, but it's interesting. So anyway, I'll, I'll report out, but I did take a couple of things from that, and Jeff and I talked about a few things that you'll hear more about, I think, over the coming month or so, that just learnings. So, and I'll continue to report out from that. And then there's the November meeting.
Which I strongly encourage everyone to go to.
And, yeah, do you want to talk for a minute about what it is and about, yeah?
It's like a three, a three-day, huh? Friday and Saturday.
Exactly, Thursday night.
And if you are a delegate and choose to go to the delegate assembly, that is Thursday night. So Thursday night delegate assembly is, we'll get a packet in the mail of all the upcoming bills and legislation that CADE would like pushed on behalf of schools. And what happens is you will vote on whether or not you actually want CADE to pursue them or not. Some districts introduce their own bills that they would like CADE to work on, on schools' behalf. And it's a great, it's like three, probably three hours of legal discussion and, and what you would like CADE to do on behalf of boards of events and towns. Some of it is, we always have the discussion on bringing, getting a better school age start, not having it four until December thirty-one, which is, you have kids in kindergarten, four to seven, it's, it's an issue. And we try every year at CADE to get it pushed, but legislature doesn't do it, but that's just one example of one thing we've tried. You get a book every year with all the delicate items on there, but that's always interesting to hear other districts issues, because sometimes we think that we have an issue, and some other districts have it way worse than we do. But that's always an interesting evening. And then Friday starts, I think, eight o'clock with, with a really good speaker, and then there's breakouts all day, lunch, and then you have all evening, some good speakers, and then Saturday morning starts bright and early at eight o'clock, and you have some breakouts for the afternoon. I think they have.
Well, they have the students.
Five or six sessions, and each session has like five choices. So there's a lot to choose from.
And they have the students' perspective, which I love that.
They have the state board event there.
That's great.
It's.
It's really good.
It's a very good learning weekend.
I think the best part is talking to other board members.
Yeah.
That is my favorite part. I learn more, I mean, and services are really good, but I've learned more from other board members. And we have it pretty good, in my opinion, in what I'm going, that's a wrong choice of words. We're a pretty well, well-put-together board, considering some of the other stuff I've heard. I mean, but still, though, I love talking to other board members.
I've learned a lot over the years. I've had a lot of great people over the years, a lot of good contacts from other districts.
Yep, I enjoyed when we actually presented too. That was a great workshop.
Yeah.
It was fantastic.
Yep. Love to get back to the, back into that. We didn't do it for this, for this year.
We did it when Ryan was here.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
It was Ryan, and.
Years, so we're back to present.
So if you're interested in attending, and you haven't let Jackie know, let Jackie know, which can secure a spot. I know there was discounted registration at some point.
Yeah. But if you're so interested. Yeah. Let us know. Yeah.
Okay. Good, any other comments? Okay, that closes our discussion and action items, and we move on to administrative reports.
Yeah, just two quick follow-ups. One on the policy or nine thousand series. Jackie sent everybody email with access to, really, I guess, the, the first place to start and pitch a discussion is Jamie. Feel free to, you know, to chime in, or if you just want to reach out a little bit. Start with the, the shipment and good one breakdown. There's a lot of nine thousand policies. So shipment had their recommendations, the Y in the end, the S in the nose. So maybe start, you know, there by looking at what they recommend to keep and hold on to for any review that you are all doing. These nine thousand series are really board policies, sort of things. We really want to allow time for you to own in on those. If you have any questions, thoughts, ideas, what you want to keep, don't want to keep, feel free to, to let us know, and we'll bring that into our review, because our review will be coming up, up the nine thousand series at the next policy committee meeting. There's quite a few in there, so, yeah. So even if you have any trouble opening that, that document or the link, you know, please just, just send, I mean, an email or let us know, or Jackie, and we'll make sure to, to get you set up, and you can always come in too and look at them, we're happy to discuss it. So that's the nine thousand series. Another piece that you received was the calendar of events. We talked about this a couple meetings ago, or in the spring, I lost track of time. But to give you all an opportunity, it was at the beginning, over the summer, give you an opportunity to really see if there's events that you want to attend. We encourage you to attend, you know, different events that are occurring, sporting events as well. We had that Outlook calendar that was developed, so it's, and you can load it and put it right on to attach it to, you know, to your calendars. I don't think anybody had a chance to click on that to see, it shows all of our events.
Something wrong, because mine was blank.
Okay.
I, I. Yeah, see here, mine was blank too.
Okay, I'm not alone.
Nothing populated anywhere.
Nothing going on there today, whether or not we're going to have this. So let us circle back on that, maybe there's an easier way to get that link.
I did my phone, my computer, my iPad.
What we quickly found, though, when it comes to all the sporting events, it would be a bad idea, I think, for us to put those.
Oh, yeah.
On the account, because they change, it's too much, and they change. We already had two games moved, you know, today, but there's a great app, the Connecticut Sports App, it's cool. I already, I downloaded it actually today, really crystal clear. You punch in, you know, Eastline, you can look at any town too. It gives you all the schedule, any sport for that day, and it updates quickly as well. So that's the best app to use, so Connecticut Sports App. If you, you know, you want to go to, just load it onto your phone, and you can see, you know, just punching the slide, it's very user-friendly.
Does it populate your calendar?
It does not. No, it does not.
You lost her. She's like.
It doesn't populate your calendar.
I gotta check it every day.
You can drag it into your calendar if you want.
On that nine thousand series, I was looking at what Jackie shared. There's the PDF document, which is our current policy, and then there's a Word.
The Word document.
That's like a template that, okay, that's what I suspected that, that was. I was going through both of those, like, okay, this looks like a template that they've sent out, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't have.
It's not even, it's not even, it's like a template that isn't even filled in.
Yeah, well, the thing that's not filled in is our own name.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Yeah, the Y in the end, I mean, the, the yeses are really the ones we want to kind of look at and get feedback on it, if you want. Obviously, if you look at the noses, if you want the ones that aren't. Yeah, so there's a lot, so we just want to give them a time for that. And then this is it, the last, last set, other than some ones that we're still hanging out, that we were just, you know.
The V I V is kind of like our charter revision.
Yeah, it is. Good point. Well said.
That's true.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that, that's it. Eric and I were talking about board goals, my goals, I started working on this weekend, so we're ramping that up. And I talked a little bit about those today, and goal development's sort of happening across the district, so. That's, that's it, yeah.
Um, so I, I'm going to just piggyback on some of the policy work. One of the things that was hanging out there was around Title I. And so in my initial analysis on the eGrants platform, it does appear that all three of our elementaries will be classified as Title I schools. Usually, it's only two out of the three, so that might be news to some of our folks in the audience this evening. So I had had some initial conversations with, actually, Mr. Provost, on what is the best way to engage parents and their input on how these funds will be used. We talked about open house, but it looks different in all the different buildings, so the platform won't be the same. So where I'm at right now is probably some sort of communication that will be included. So where I'm at right now is probably some sort of communication that will be included in the weekly swathes with a link to a form that parents can add feedback, just fill out a quick form, add their ideas. And then depending on what I get from that, maybe a drop-in where, um you know, we can have like a drop-in session and talk about how we use the funds and what other ideas can happen.
That's perfect.
And in addition to that, I will link the policy in, because in our policy, it says that that parents have the opportunity to provide feedback on the policy itself. So I'm working on putting that all together for our building principals to send home. So it'll be all three elementaries and our middle school.
Thank you.
Um so I had my first curriculum fellow meeting last week at the elementary levels. Our, the meetings will now start to ramp up. The first week of school was quiet in the way of meetings. And now, you know, the calendar quickly, quickly fills up, which is all really great, exciting things. Um I will be updating the board on the work at the elementary level specifically to that Right to Read Act and some legislation. So that will be coming um probably mid-year, um once we get our, our feet on the ground again this year. Um but we are, I had shared some of the amazing curriculum projects that happened this summer. So I will work with them on picking up where we left off and now working on, you know, what they, the curriculum they wrote and then what it looks like, looks like in terms of classroom implementation and continuing, continuing that feedback cycle there. Um I think we've been off to a great start with regards to the professional development and the restored. We've had a lot of great things happening, a lot of good feedback um from, from our teachers and staff on the start of the school year, focused on relationships and reconnecting. And I feel really good about it. I'm very excited about what the school year has to bring in the way of growth and development for our district. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay.
Thanks, Annalise.
Mariana. Um just uh bringing up for the audit, um last year's fiscal audit. And then as Jeff and I talked, starting the budget for next year, thinking, you know, getting all the stuff ready to send out to all of the principals and partners. So
We had our two-month reprieve and
Really
Start the next year.
Yeah, really, really quick. But it's like October will be here before you know it. So
Can I just?
Yeah.
So I noticed that we have a budget meeting planned for November. It's also the same night as the delegate assembly.
Ooh, the fifteenth.
Seventeen, yep.
Seventeenth or fifteenth.
I don't know, but Thursday night, there's a budget workshop scheduled. It's also the same night as the delegate assembly.
Okay.
You may be remember that. Thank you.
Do other people go?
Huh?
You two have gone.
I usually go every year.
Okay, so no one else can go. I was just gonna say
You've gone.
We can have as many people
No, but I like, let's just say someone else wants to be a delegate. But if you two have that locked in, then that's, that's fine. I'm just bringing it up to someone. We have new members.
Invite as many people as we want, but because of the size of our district, only one person can have the power.
Oh.
So, but no
So you can attend.
No, no, but I'm just making, maybe someone else wants to be a delegate. Sometimes, I'm just doing that out. Maybe there are other people that don't want to be delegates, but there's new people on the board. I think we should open those opportunities.
That's what I was going, that was funny.
I'm saying, I don't want to be a delegate, but there may be other people that want to. But if you two have it locked in, that's it. I'm just making a suggestion.
And let's just add on that, because every year I know that we get this booklet and Jamie is always saying that she wants to go over the booklet with everybody to get their feedback to help either her or I vote. So I think it's a great opportunity actually, because every board member can really learn the process and have input, whether or not they attend or not.
No, I wasn't thinking
He was like, Candace, I'm good. I'm good.
So to attend as a delegate, is it registration?
Yeah, I don't get, no, I don't, I haven't seen the registration come out yet.
Yeah, but Jack
Usually like around October.
You can just show up. I did. I don't think, no one's gonna kick you out of the room. These are all educators and you'll meet some really interesting people. I met some really interesting people. So. So.
Crash the delegate part. What it sounds like.
Believe me, it's, I'm sure you
Okay, um that closes
Oh, I think Bill has a question.
Are we No, 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 not yet. Committee reports, uh so like closes administration reports, committee reports. Triple A, we, it was on the fifteenth. We should have debriefed on the fifteenth from that one. So we had the FFO before this meeting.
We did, and we had a robust conversation. So we've already discussed the maintenance truck and the Eastline Middle School hot water heater uh purchase. Um but you can, when I put in the notes, you'll see the breakdown of both. The Aquatic Center financial review was lengthy. Um and I think that we, as Jeff had suggested, that we have it um on the agenda as a recurrence. That way we can um continue to kind of monitor the data and stuff. So looking at it, I think that, you know, the Aquatic Center has struggled um for years, to be honest with you. Um and a lot of suggestions uh that were made. Um and again, you're gonna start to see a, a real strong theme from me is revenue. Um the Aquatic Center really has uh potential, to say the least. The opportunities are endless and um, you know, advertising it, marketing it um would benefit that program, would benefit the district, would benefit the community. It's a regional um resource and it's kind of, in my just opinion, it's isolated. It just doesn't really seem to be out there as much as it really could be. So, you know, we're gonna encourage that um to hopefully, you know, see some growth. So we'll see where that goes and we will continue to, to monitor it and help them along as, as much as possible. Uh we also talked about the internal controls, print shop inventory system. And that's really kind of um creating the internal accountability measures, I'm gonna kind of say. Um, you know, cashless system, that type of stuff. And I think that they're doing a really great job of that. So we'll see where that goes. We're gonna continue to monitor that. Uh we also talked about uh the print shop, but possibly integrating an in-school store with um the students in a class management. I don't even know how to really say that. Yeah, I think I'm good. Um which would be beneficial, not just to the students, but also for the school. There really is not a school store and you can even tie it into the print shop. So there's a lot of opportunity there for, for a lot of growth for um the kids. And that was really it.
Questions for Candace? Okay, and then policies.
Yeah, yes, nineteen.
Okay, we, oh, before the meeting, our next board meeting, okay. That closes the committee report. So now we're on board comments of future agenda items and Bill is up for it.
I just had, I just had a couple of things. One was kind of FYI, I had been approached by Sean, um the chairman of the board from Salem about um getting the robotics co-op back up and running again post-COVID or whatever we're calling this. Um and he was also super excited about actually getting a program here in Eastline. He wa, he was actually asking me, well, you know, can I get a robotics team going here at the high school? I said, well, I've been trying to do it for about twenty years. It's not easy to get off the ground. But I just wanted to let everyone else know that we're gonna try to make it work again as a co-op with the hope of um, you know, getting the pro, getting Eastline to have its own program. I do think that it would fit right in with the pathway stuff. It's really, it, I can't say how much it energized the technology engineering department in, in Old Lime. It's like, just completely revamped it. So it was, um if, if you can get it off the ground, it's a wonderful thing. But it um, it certainly requires some human resources and a lot of energy. So I'm more than willing to, to help in any way that I can. And Sean, um I don't know if you know, he works at EB, so he's working um there, trying to get mentors and stuff like that. So he seems like a, a good guy. I've just gotten to know him. He seems like a good guy. The other comment I had, um I was at our faculty meeting in, in Old Lime and I just learned that we have vape sensors now installed in our bathrooms. And they are, I guess, becoming quite popular in different schools and in conjunction with cameras that are in the hallways. Basically, you can say, okay, student A went in there, the vape thing went off. Obviously, we know that this is the kid who's going in the bathroom and vaping all the time. I bring that up because I know that my own kids were talking about, you know, certain ba, bathrooms that they avoided here, because that was the place that everyone was going to vape. And I'm thinking, well, you know, I, I mean, I, I'm not a huge fan of the whole big brother thing and every, but on the other hand, you know, kids should be able to go to the bathroom without feeling like they're you know, walking in on somebody that they now have to act like they didn't see something that they saw. So um I thought, I, I'll give you an update and see how it flies at our school when I learn more about it. But um I thought it was interesting that they had these things out there.
We've talked about coalition meetings.
Yeah, we've had conversations about getting those. Um so we'll circle back. I'm glad you brought that up to get those. We have talked a little while, so, and then Chris Olson was, was on that um as well. So I'll bring that back around.
I would, yeah, I would think that's gotta be, you know, there's gotta be money.
These big companies probably have to give you their own, one of the billions that
sued for or whatever. Um so
A good youth coalition, yeah, that's, that's a good thought, Jamie.
Board comments? Okay.
I have three. One is a reminder about the policy, just keep saying it. Um two, we have Oyster Fest the twenty-fourth for the Miracle League. Um if anybody would like to volunteer, let me know. I'll send you a volunteer signup sheet. Um we're looking for volunteers. We're still a little short. Um it's a really, really fun day. It's very busy.
Saturday.
Saturday. Um it's a busy, busy day, but it is so much fun and it's raising money for good cause. So if anybody wants to go or if they want details on how to volunteer, just let me know and I'll
I'd like to volunteer. I mean
They've cut it up into shifts this year.
Okay, good.
So I, I, I think it's three hours. I think it's a three-hour shift. Each, there's like thirty different stations that they are looking for coverage for, but they're broken into shifts.
So they're three hours.
Yep.
Okay.
What's the date, Janice?
The twenty-fourth, Saturday, September. Yep, sorry, Saturday. And then my third thing is a future agenda item. Um trying to find a way to say what I have to say. I would like for us to have a discussion on the perceived board of ed policy of no homework and K to two. Um there is no homework apparently in grades K to two, because the board of ed has passed the policy that says that there's no homework in K to two. Um there's also no laptops going home for K to two. Um and my concern is that one, we are purchasing the laptops as one-to-one devices to go home with the students um as enrichment. Coming off of two bad COVID years, I'm concerned with no homework and no laptops reinforcing the learning that's happening in schools. Um, because news is, Old Line did exceptionally well during the COVID years and have the best growth ever.
They were in school. We were in school. It's not fair. You can't compare.
So my concern is My concern is
It doesn't matter, we're being compared.
My concern is we are being compared. Um I know that you guys went to school full-time. Um but my concern is, is we are being compared. Um our kids' test scores are going to be compared. Um and we do have a lot of lost learning to make up. So my concern is, is the lack of homework because of this board policy um that's not being given to reinforce the learning during the day. And my second is the laptops that we're asking parents to pay thirty dollars in insurance for and they're not coming home. Um they're staying at school. So uh in my understanding was, is that we bought the laptops to reinforce the learning that was done at school so the kids could play their Lexia or their math games at home as they saw fit to reinforce things that they learned during the day. So I would like for us to please have a talk and discussion around those two items, if that's possible.
Triple A, yeah.
Yeah, and I can address just quickly, just that it's not board policy, because the board policy actually dictates that.
Well, I know that, but I was told there's a policy in place.
And part of the triple A work last year was on elementary homework guidelines. We had a whole committee come together um and work on developing those guidelines. So I can send those to the board for review.
Just because when my kid comes home and she says, there's no homework for the year, um at all.
Yeah.
Uh and I'm working with her on homework that I make up, because she does need homework. She needs something to reinforce the things that she's done during the day.
So I, I will share with you the guidelines that were developed by the committee last year. Um it was not, it was a, something that happened over a very long period of time with many representatives. Um so I wouldn't say there's no, no homework, but the homework is different depending on the grade level. Um it is aligned to, you know, what best practice is with regards to research. Triple A was involved in um providing feedback on those guidelines, which we took into consideration and made some adjustments. We did do a soft rollout last year midway through the year.
I remember the rollout being more like we're gonna do appropriate homework, not no homework.
Right, so somewhere there's, there's something missing um in the messaging. So we certainly can go back and revisit that. Uh but in the meantime, before next meeting, I will share out just a reminder of what those guidelines are. Um the device, in, in the guidelines, and this was a part of the committee's decision, was that the device is actually when we use as homework at home. Um we did talk about that for some families, they could provide access to reading materials for those family who's didn't have it, because that is a part of the homework guidelines. But that would be done on an individual basis. There was a lot of pushback on sending devices home with kids every night.
So are we having those parents who are not having devices go home still pay the thirty dollars? Because they shouldn't be.
So it's not a requirement, it's optional.
Right, but if the device is never coming home.
Well, it could.
It could come home. So for the most part, the device is staying in school. And but there are times when a child might get sick, a family might want to bring the, the laptop home. We're not going to say no to things. There is
The email that went out did look like there is no option. It's no laptops for K to two. They're staying
It's K one.
Sorry, K one. It's staying at school. But then my concern is, is we're asking parents to pay thirty dollars for insurance and the device is staying at school. Like, we would never ask a parent to pay for a high school computer in a lab if it broke down.
Right, we've had, we've definitely had those conversations.
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked about next year, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna charge. Charging will start
I don't mind paying if the device is coming home.
Yeah.
If the device is staying at school, why are you
So there is this possibility of it going home. And as a parent, you can request it come home if there's something in particular you want to do with your child on the laptop at home to support further growth and development. The Lexia piece is an entirely separate issue. Actually, the Lexia rep does not recommend it be practiced at home. Because what happens is, parents are helping, it's not really indicative of the student's ability or the child's ability. It actually um has a negative impact on the results of Lexia and, you know, the algorithms behind it. It isn't responsive to the student's need. Also, we find kids moving through that program too, actually too quickly, that is not developmentally appropriate.
So there were some
I think we're getting a little too deep, so let triple A. Yeah, well, we can bring information, send it out in the, we can order something and then we can also bring to triple A.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay. Other board comments?
Also, on, on October ninth, uh then they had the Native Nation and the Eastline Historical Society had an event for Indigenous Peoples' Day on the Cooks. They had this event
Ten-nine?
Uh October ninth, yeah, from twelve to four. They had this event last year and they had a lot of educational things for the kids. They had a book for the kids that they gave out and they had over three hundred people attending. They had this event last year and they had a lot of educational things for the kids. They had a book for the kids that they gave out and they had over three hundred people attending. It was very, very good, so they're hoping for for a good turnout, so I'll have to share more details as as they come in right now, the date is October ninth from twelve to four.
Other board comments?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.